2020 meeting of the Clive City Council, will the clerk please call the role?
Mr. Ksina.
Here.
Council members Klein, Edwards.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
And Weaver.
Here.
Okay, very good. Nice to have everybody with us on this Zoom meeting. Again, good evening. We're going to move ahead with the Pledge of Allegiance. We don't have a scout with us this evening as has been our recent tradition. So we're going to have our very able and capable city clerk, Matthew Graham, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Matthew, if you would.
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Matthew. Next item is approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Move approval.
Second.
By John, seconded by Ted. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The agenda is approved. Okay, the next item is proclamation for beggars' night, October 30th, 2020, from 5:30 to 8:30 PM. And Matt, I'm going to go ahead and just, I'm going to read the proclamation and then I'll let you and Richard come in behind and discuss some of the other tips that we have for our residents and for our kids for beggars' night. Sound like a plan? Good, I knew you were in total agreement. Okay. So beggars' night 2020, whereas each year the mayor is asked to proclaim a beggars' night as part of the annual observance of Halloween and whereas a tradition has evolved in the greater Des Moines area that youngsters go trick or treating on the evening prior to Halloween. And whereas it is felt that it be in the best interest of the community that beggars' night be observed on the same day throughout the area and whereas the city of Clive staff has surveyed communities in the metropolitan area and found that October 30th, 2020 was the preferred night for beggars' night. And whereas the global COVID-19 pandemic is a serious public health emergency that requires all residents to take special precautions to keep people safe and healthy. Whereas the city of Clive monitors COVID-19 metrics closely and may need to adapt plans for beggars' night 2020 2020 to protect public health. Whereas the city of Clive and other community partners are offering many lower risk activities that are safe alternatives for celebrating beggars' night, given the ongoing public health emergency. Now therefore, I Scott Sircena, Mayor of the city of Clive, do hereby proclaim the evening of October 30th from 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM as beggar beggars' night in Clive, Iowa, given the ongoing COVID-19 public health emergency. I further request residents of Clive to take all precautions to decrease the likelihood of spreading the virus that causes COVID-19 while still making the celebration of beggars' night safe and enjoyable. And then we have a number of tips for beggars to enjoy the night safely. And Matt, I'll turn it to you. Discuss these and then talk about the timing of the evening.
Yes, your honor. Thank you. The, as we discussed from the last council meeting, trying to find the balance, knowing that there was going to be a desire for continued beggars' night activity, but also can we all offer alternatives for those families and children who it was, it is listed as a high risk activity by the CDC to do the traditional beggars' night format. So we felt and in consultation with other neighboring cities who are issuing very similar guidelines to what you see in this proclamation, making sure we're pointing out all the guidelines that the Iowa Department of Public Health has put out there in terms of not advising against the traditional trick or treating where you're going right up to the door, having certain public safety guidelines in place. And those are listed in the proclamation in terms of obviously being very cognizant if you're experiencing symptoms or if you're high risk for for the virus. But also at the same time, and Richard will be discussing this in more detail later in the meeting when we have the leader services programming update, is as a city, we wanted to really make sure we were offering strong alternatives for those families that may not be comfortable or with the tradition, with a beggars' night experience. And so Richard and the library and recreation and parks teams have a pretty good menu of alternative programming, whether it be a family's spooky scavenger hunt, movie night, you know, themed around Halloween. The library doing some makers videos related to what we call social distancing candy delivery systems, if you will. Just a lot of fun activities that we're really hoping to promote very hard over this next month. And so we felt, you know, based on the council's direction and discussion at the last meeting, we were, we were going to find that balance between knowing that there's going to definitely be some folks and families that will be wanting to do the, some of the beggars' night activities. But also can we provide a safe environment, some safe guidelines here in this proclamation and then alternative programming activities? So without your honor, we feel that this, this step is appropriate and appreciate you reading that proclamation.
Thank you, Matt. And again, more discussion later. So I appreciate that and appreciate the, the steps and creativity of the staff to try to break some things forward to be helpful for our residents and for the kids in Clive. So thank you very much. We'll move now to citizens' presentation. This is where anyone that is joining the meeting can address the council on an item that is not currently on the agenda this evening. Is there anyone here to do so? If you, if you are, please make yourself known to Pete the Cook so he can get to set up and plug in for us.
Folks, the best way to do that, if you're participating using a computer, is to use the hand raise function. To access that, click on the, in the, in the black row, hit the bottom of your Zoom screen, click on the participant tab. And then you will see a button within that window where you can raise your hand. And if you're on the phone and would like to raise your hand, you can press star nine. Mayor, I do not see any hands going up.
Seeing, seeing none, then we'll move to consent items.
Move the resolution.
Okay.
That's moved by John, seconded by Ted. Further discussion? Hearing none. Will the council please vote? I didn't pass this four to zero. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move to, to the fun part of the agenda. We have the honorable Greg Edwards with us this evening. From Catch Des Moines, always look forward to Greg's update. And Greg, great to have you with us. Always appreciate your partnership and looking forward to hearing your words of wisdom this evening, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mark, and thank you, council and city management and any guests that may be listening in. Yeah, I think we all agree. It's been, it's been a rough storm we've been going through for the last seven months and seems to be getting a little brighter each day, and I do mean a little brighter. I just kind of, I've got about 12 slides here to review with you to give you an up to date on really what's happening now and really how we ended the year last year. I think you all probably know that tourism is one of the hardest hit industries across the country. You know, just some national stats, there's 15.8 million pre-pandemic workers in the tourism hospitality industry nationwide, of which about half of those, of those jobs have been wiped out currently. At the height of our pandemic here locally, five of our metro hotels did temporarily, temporarily close down. There's still one that is now closed down, but scheduled to reopen early next week. On the budget side of things for your Catch Des Moines, your Convention and Visitors Bureau, we sustained a 54% cut to our budget for this fiscal year. We're on the same fiscal as you all are, July 1 fiscal. So we're down 54%. We've cut back, many cuts, just to name a few. We cut staff by 25%. We've cut salaries by 5% across the board. And we cut all incentive pay out of our budget from both last year and this year. As you can see, a month or so ago, you would have received our year end review, which was a one pager. I know some of you do read our monthly briefs that we put out every early in the, every month. We do appreciate your reading those. We, we look at the open rates. We can't obviously tell who's opening and reading. But we, we do appreciate if you would read those because it's up to date, updates on what's happening at your CDB and the activity, some of the other activity in the metro area. Actually, year end though, considering the last, almost last half of the fiscal year last year was traumatic. We ended the year pretty strongly. We had some great bookings throughout the year. We had some great activity throughout the year. I'm really ending the year in February with the Iowa caucus, which in our mind, from the visitor industry, was a tremendous success. Although it may have not been so successful by the media and the results and all that good kind of stuff. But we, our impressions, our media hits, our social media, all of those numbers way, way sky high during the caucus this year. So we're grateful for that and very grateful, hopefully in the future, that we can now return the caucus or some sort of first in the nation for Iowa in the future. Just a couple of data points to Clive occupancy for last fiscal year was 58.7%. The metro occupancy was 59.5%, so you're pretty much in line with the metro. Year to date this year, you're at a 45, 45.1% occupancy compared to a metro occupancy of 39.9%. So really you're, you're one of the leaders in the metro occupancy wise. And what we've seen since the pandemic in hotel, and we track weekly, the STAR report that we receive, it shows all our different metro areas. But what we found, especially at the beginning, was a lot of the interstate hotel, located hotels were doing the best. Construction crews, travelers by road, things like that. So Clive proved very favorably in that ballpark, as well as Altoona and Ankeny and some of the other interstate type hotel metro areas. Go ahead, next slide, please. So here's some really devastating news. Since COVID-19 hit, again, back in March, we had 305 events canceled or postponed. This is conventions, meetings, sporting events. Total economic impact of more than $282 million hit to our local economies. I would say about 85% of them actually canceled. Some of them postponed. Some of them that did postpone that eventually canceled, but I'll bring you up some, some more data here in just a second. So go ahead, next slide, please. I guess I can also tell you, you know, I'll show you here in a bit, some of the things we've been doing in the community with our industry partners and what have you, but we've been hosting visitor industry meetings with our hospitality partners. The last one we did just a couple of weeks ago, we had Jeff Bruning, who owns, one of the owners of Fort Press Restaurants. They own Buzzard Billy's and Royal Mile, Hessen House, and all those, those fun restaurant bars. He tells us that his traffic and volume is down 70% from a year ago. We've also connected with Kevin Foley at the Des Moines International Airport regularly. And he's telling us as of September, only about 38 to 40% of their air traffic is back to where it was a year ago. So, you know, it's just hitting from all angles, but I'm sure you all see that as well. We, funding wise, just on another side note, we fought hard with our U.S. Travel Association to try to get Congress to support us with some PPP funding, us being destination marketing organizations across the country. The fact is, when we do get a green light, we're the ones that can accelerate our economies probably quicker than any organization out there. That the hangup has been, interestingly enough, most of us are, we're all 501(c)(3) organizations. What we found out, there are also campaign packs are mostly 501(c)(3) organizations. So a lot of the elected officials and the federal government have steered away from funding any kind of 501(c)(3) organizations, but we continue to work hard to try to get some, some funding. We're also working with the Iowa Economic Development Authority on some perhaps future funding through the governor's office with some of the CARES money that comes in, which will help really bring, bring our budget back to still not normal, but bring us back to be able to help sell and market the area a little bit more effective than what we are currently. Sales side, if you, if you back up a slide there, guys, sorry. Yeah, there you go. Actually, last year, as I mentioned earlier, was our best booking year ever. We booked 388 conventions, meetings, sporting events, et cetera. Again, a lot of those have been lost since that time, postponed, canceled. But we did, we were off to a great run until this pandemic hit. Our board at our June annual meeting, who always approves our annual goals, set our goals at 220 this year. Obviously, it's a slow struggle. We are seeing some bookings right now. I'll talk about that here in a little bit. Go ahead, next slide, please. Just some of the things that we've been doing, I mentioned earlier with our industry, we initially started off, we were holding weekly hotel communication meetings on Zoom to keep the hotels up to speed on what was going on in the industry nationwide, locally, all of those kinds of things, getting their feedback. We now do those every other week. We facilitate, coordinate all the postponements and cancellations with them, just all kinds of communication with them. We also created the Buy Now, Visit Later Hotel Bond Program early on in the pandemic to try to help hotels with a little bit of cash flow. It was a very successful event that we put on. We had 30 participating hotels throughout the metro. They didn't make a lot of money on it, but it did help bring some cash into their, into their pockets there for a short time. We also partnered with Greater Des Moines Partnership with the Support Local Resources Hub and website, which really helped small businesses, restaurants, what have you throughout the metro as well. Did a lot of virtual activities, supporting and promoting all the virtual activities around the metro. Things for families to do, kids were going stir crazy, the parents were going stir crazy. Also promoted a lot of that as well. Also became a meeting planner resource with our, our meeting planner network with a lot of support there. We came up with the Des Moines Good News, actually we call it Duh, Good News website, where we shared a lot of good news stories, try to keep things positive, try to keep things moving. The Des Moines Local Challenge, buy515local.com, on and on and on. And ended the summer, late August, with of course promoting our annual Des Moines Restaurant Week as well, which was pretty successful and helped draw some more business into our earning restaurant industry as well. Next slide, please. This slide is a, is from STAR. This is the Smith Travel Research Report that we receive on a weekly basis. The red line will show you what our current occupancy is for every month. You can see the blue line of sort of the average daily rate is. You can see the huge drop from where we were in February, way down where we kind of bottomed out in April. But we're slowly ticking back. Current August was 52.9% occupancy metrowide, as I mentioned earlier, with an $85.80 average daily hotel rate. That compares to last year at this time, it would be about 70% metrowide occupancy with about $105.00 average daily rate. Obviously, has huge impact on hotel motel tax. Next slide, please. This is a pretty busy slide. You may want to detect this or take this back and read it in your, in your leisure, if you, if you care to. This shows our weekly STAR reports. Again, you see a lot of peaks and valleys here. Some interesting things to point out. In July, you see a little bit of a peak. That's where we were able to capture a large basketball tournament, the Nike Tournament of Champions, which was actually scheduled for the McCormick Place in Chicago. It was a three week event, three different segues. When, it was a Wednesday through Sunday event. Teams would come in Wednesday, check out Sunday, the following Wednesday through Sunday, three weeks long. Brought in about 1,000 people each week period. This was eighth grade girls through high school girls tournament. Filled the entire Iowa Event Center with basketball courts and Ivy Hall, Wells Fargo Arena. Had a great impact on hotels in the metro and really gave us kind of a, a shot in the arm there during a really slow time period for July. So that was good news. Another peak, kind of interesting, a big peak in August that you see, believe it or not, that was duration. Saw a huge impact. People lost power. People went to hotels. I think we even saw people, I know we did see people from out of the metro area, perhaps Cedar Rapids area and other hard hit areas that actually came and stayed in Des Moines. Thought, what the heck, we're going to be out of power for a week. Let's go, you know, have a mini vacation. So we saw quite a peak there. So again, we're seeing peaks and valleys and those sorts of things. Go ahead, next slide, please. Back to another chart, which, which really charts out actual hotel motel projections. We went into the budget year very, very conservative. And thankfully, we're, we're beating those projections. At least for our first quarter results, we're ahead of the game. Projections right now are second quarter, we're going to be ahead of the game of what we budgeted for. Third and fourth quarter are still going to be kind of iffy as that's obviously going into the 2021 season. So but again, you can see the red line, our 1920 fiscal year actuals. Our blue line is the 2021 budget and the yellow line is where we're actually at. So you can see both the average daily rate is above what we projected and occupancy is as well. Next slide, please. These, this is some other good news. I usually share this with you too. It's, it's our TAP report. It's our PACE booking report. Shows us in the hotels primarily where we are on pace for future year bookings. As you well know, most of the stuff we do is booked in future years, a year, two years in advance, especially the large conventions of sporting events and things like that. We also compare ourselves to specific destinations, destinations similar to our size, like Lexington's, Providence, Rhode Island, Spokane, Washington, and then also some of our competitive set of Louisville, Milwaukee and Omaha. That bottom chart shows you that really we're ahead of the curve, even with a lot of our competitive cities. So our bookings are strong and they continue to be strong, although way, way less than what they would be at normal times. But we are booking things for especially 22, 2022, 23 and beyond. Some of the major events coming in for next year still on the books and still holding strong is the National Speech and Debate Tournament. It's going to be scheduled, it's scheduled to be actually in Waukees, Clive, West Des Moines. But it's about 10,000 kids coming in in June of next year. I hopped on a call with the Board of Directors just a week or so ago. Talked to them about, don't do anything drastic. Let's hold on. Let's see what, after the first of the year, let's see what the future holds and what vaccines look like and and all good, that kind of good stuff. So they're hanging in there with us. Ironman is rescheduled to be, take place next June. National Junior High School Rodeo is scheduled for next June. U.S., U.S. Youth Soccer President's Cup, which is another huge booking for us, is scheduled for July of next summer. And we will be hosting next fall, the Lions Club International Convention, which is a huge deal as well. So all of those big things continue to hang in there. So fingers crossed on all of that. Some sales highlights for the year. We continue with, actually, we have two different groups that we've set up. A year ago, we set up our National Planner Advisory Board. We have about 20 different national planners from all different segments. Association planners, corporate meeting planners, sports planners. And we meet with them quarterly and talk to them about trends that are happening here, what they're hearing in their worlds, what they're doing for future bookings. Matter of fact, we had a call, excuse me, with them today. And still pretty, pretty bleak out there. For the majority of them, they're still not planning any in-person meetings. Some of the groups, the ag groups are planning, are moving ahead. This January, we're thankful that Iowa Pork Expo is going to happen. The Iowa Power Farming Show is going to happen. And there's some other ag related type groups that are still happening, which is a blessing as well. New meeting event hosting ideas. We did talk, you probably read the paper several weeks ago, we talked about doing a basketball bubble here. We were going to partner with Drake and the Iowa Event Center. Unfortunately, that has fallen through. What has happened is these larger schools, mid-major schools have started their own bubbles. And they're now paying these smaller schools to come play in their bubbles. A good example of that is K-State down in Manhattan is doing the bubble. Drake's now going to play there. They're bringing in big teams, small teams, a good mixed match. And they're actually paying the teams to come down there. So Drake obviously pulled out for good reason and so that's not going to happen. The I think I hit, I, go ahead, next slide. I think I've hit all the rest of that. On the marketing side of things, you can back up just one. Our marketing team's done an awesome job. We, if you haven't checked some of the videos out, we have a ton of videos, a lot of them we've done in-house at a very low expense. The S's are silent campaign continues. We've really promoted a lot of outdoor activities. You know, come to the metro, enjoy all the many outdoor activities we have with your family. All those kinds of different things. So we've done a great job in our digital advertising, our advertising budget, needless to say, with the rest of our budget slashed drastically. But we continue to do some great things out there and continue to spark some interest and we are getting quite a bit of leisure business in here, especially on the weekends. It's been interesting watching the hotel occupancy. Our weekends have been spiking more than the weekdays. Obviously weekday is contingent upon business travel. We have a lot of conversations with our local corporate principal, Wells Fargo, all the big corporate. And a lot of them still are not doing any business travel. Only essential travel, as they say. So times are still, still a little dark and, and heavy out there, but on that, I'm, I guess our final slide is, we still were able, despite all of the postponements, cancellations, generate over $47 million in economic impact to the metro area this past year with meetings, conventions. to the metro area this past year with meetings, conventions, sports, et cetera. I would be happy to take questions, but I want to make one last comment to Mayor Sirxina. And this is probably not in my role politically correct, but I'm going to say it anyway. Mayor, I wish you the best of luck in a couple of weeks. Everybody I've talked to is talking only positive things about you. You're a great man, you're a great leader, you're a great politician. I think you'll be a great state senator, so good luck to you.
Great, thank you. Thank you for those, those kind words and for your presentation. That last slide was, boy, you know, it's, it's got to be tough for you to be giving these updates in the times that we're in. Obviously, you said it, really the, the most impacted industry certainly that, that we're affiliated with. And so you and your, and your team have worked really hard to make, you know, lemonade out of lemons. And unfortunately, this is going to go on for a while, but I appreciate the work of you and your team and, and thank you for being here to share with us. Counsel, are there questions for, for Greg?
I have one. Hi Greg, good to see you.
Good to see you, Susan.
I'm interested and concerned since we've been hearing from the Restaurant Association, how many restaurants they're expecting to go out of business? If you have any similar concerns for the hotel industry?
I don't on the hotel side of things. What you will see, what you have seen is some of the hotels that were going to open here very shortly or have even opened by now are not going to open for a while, like the Hotel Fort Des Moines is a good example of that. And probably smartly so, if they don't have to open, then why open now? Fortunately, I have not heard, there's been huge layoffs. You've seen the national reports, I mean, the Marriott's and the Hilton's and the big chain hotels, hundreds of thousands of layoffs. Fortunately, they're maintaining their own and, you know, they're not making any money. I think that the rule of thumb is if you're not running at least sixty percent occupancy, you're not making any money and nobody's running sixty percent occupancy. So, but I have not heard any, any rumors or anything about hotel closures.
Good, thank you.
Counsel, any questions for Greg?
I have a question, Mayor. Hey Greg, thanks for being here, obviously. Really tough times for, for you and your folks. I had same question that Susan had, but another question I had was, what, what do you foresee as far as the long-term future for your organization and organizations like yours? So I mean, we're probably not going to bounce right out of this. It's probably going to be a slow ramp up to get back out of, you know, I think a lot of businesses are going to reevaluate business travel and doing a lot more Zoom and things of that nature. So how do you see this impacting your organization long-term?
Yeah, I think, you know, I mean, we're staying positive and I'm positive on it. We, we're more vital now than we've ever been. And, you know, as I've said early on, I mean, we're the organizations that can accelerate this thing once we have that opportunity. Yeah, business travel is going to be a long time coming. So what are we going to have to do to subsidize that is try to find more conventions and events and, and those sort of things. And ironically, we've been working on our strategic plan with a company called JLL for the last fourteen months, still has not been finalized. But we spent a lot of time on that events sector and how important it is to try to bring more events in, whether they be sports, again, conventions, whatever, or festivals that have visitor impact and all that kind of stuff. So I, I think it's going to be of essence that, that we're a front-runner. And you're right, I mean, our budget, you know, as I mentioned early on, down fifty-four percent. We're just, we're going to have to gradually build again. The way we build our budget is we build hotel occupancies and we know that. So that's, that's a big incentive for us as well.
Well, I like your positive attitude and you are definitely critical to the region. So we, we want to see you be successful.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Others, counsel? Well, Greg, once again, thank you for your partnership, for your friendship. Keep fighting the good fight, my friend, you're doing it. And, you know, next year, I think it's going to be a different conversation, but I think, I think we all, we're all going into this with our eyes wide open that we know and understand it's going to be a, a slow ramp up and you guys just have to be there and you will be. And so, so we're grateful for your, for your work and, and for the great partnership. Thanks again, Greg, for being here.
Thank you all, God bless.
Okay, counsel, we're going to move now to action items. The first item is a resolution approving the professional services agreement with the Smith Group regarding the development of the Green Belt Landing Site Plan and Construction Plans, and Richard will turn it up to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have a recommendation in front of you to really start to kick off the first of the triad projects for the Green Belt. Like the mayor said, we have a recommendation to hire the Smith Group to be our consultant team that will take it from the conceptual design that we have right now all the way through getting this ready and getting construction plans done. As you recall, we originally had intended to just hire a consultant team to do phase one of, of the Green Belt project, but the ongoing pandemic really eliminated fundraising for this year. And so we felt like we had an opportunity to maybe step back and design this entire project and have it ready to go so that in 2021, we can re-kick off the fundraising project and hopefully by late summer of next year, be ready to go with the first phase of construction. So what we did is we created a new RFP to cover the entire design of this project and send it out to over forty consultant teams across Iowa, Des Moines, the Midwest to see if we could find some good teams that would be interested in coming in here and doing this project. We held a pre-submittal kind of meeting so people knew what they were getting into. We had thirteen teams participate in that. Ultimately, we got four proposals for this project and went through the process with a team of city staff as well as the Great Outdoors Foundation to narrow it down. We narrowed it down to two teams, the Smith Group as well as Bolton and Mink. And following an interview process, we felt comfortable recommending to you that you hire this team led by the Smith Group to undertake this project. After reviewing all the proposals, we really felt that the Smith Group was the best team to take this. They had the, the best vision for the site and what it could become. You have so many great amenities out here, additional amenities we want to add to, and we really felt like they, they brought the best team that could really take that and create a, a really cool public space for the city of Clive here. We also then followed up with their references, people that we trust in, in the profession, and they came very highly recommended. So they're a new team to, at least to the city of Clive. They're fairly new to central Iowa, so we want to make sure that we, we got the right team here. And we just really felt that they're the best team to help take this project and, and turn it into fruition. They had great project examples that we think will translate very well here in Clive and, and we're excited about the, the possibility of working with them. Even though we are going to design the whole project, we do anticipate that this will probably get broken up into multiple phases of construction, depending on how fundraising goes next year. But we're very excited about this and excited about this recommendation in front of you. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Also on the meeting tonight is Tom Rogers and Dave Wollmit with the Smith Group. Should you have any questions for them as well?
Counsel, let's start with questions. Are there any for Richard or the group?
I've got a couple if, if others don't. So, Richard, could you, I'm obviously not familiar with Smith Group. I did read through their proposal and it was very impressive, I thought. Haven't seen any of the others, but I did like their proposal. But in the interviews, can you speak to what specifically set them apart from Bolton and Mink?
Yeah, no, experience, qualifications, they were both very similar teams. What I believe really set them apart from the, the other team was that they actually had the ability to come out and look at the site before they actually put in their proposal. So they've been to the site before, even though they're out of town. And they recognized a lot of the pieces out there that were really pretty fantastic, but said, you know, you just need a, a way to put this together and create this high-quality public space, a way that draws people in off of one hundred and fourteenth street, draws people off of the Green Belt and really sets this area apart. You, you have a great regional aquatic center, you have the bones of where we do Clive Festival every year. You have this opportunity to, to really take and do some innovative stormwater management from not only just a quality standpoint, but educational. And, and the way they looked at it and the way they kind of sold their team to us was really important that this becomes not a, a set of a lot of different elements, but it becomes one kind of integrated park space that draws people back to here, not just one time, but over and over throughout the year.
Okay. And then on the steering committee, could you give a, a little flavor to that? You know, how's it going to be made up? How often are they going to meet? What, what are the, you know, the key inputs that it's providing?
Yeah, so we will likely use the, the Campaign Advisory Committee as well as city staff to take that, that concept that was done. So there won't be a, a lot of extra input from the public because most of that was done through the Green Belt Master Plan Process and the concepts that were developed there. It's just really taking that and finalizing it and getting it ready for construction drawings and making sure that we can sell pieces of it for fundraising, making sure we're meeting all the city's ordinances, making sure we meet all the stormwater stuff. So it'll be more technical in nature.
Okay. And is that going to be in place for the entire length of the project or is it just for phase one or how, how does that work?
So that will really be from a standpoint of getting it to the construction stand, startup construction phase, which we, we would estimate will start late next summer. From that standpoint, then it'll be managed from a city staff standpoint to make sure the construction gets implemented.
Thank you.
Other questions, counsel?
Yeah, I have a quick question, maybe two, but first, I'm, I'm always worried when a project is a multi-year project or, you know, phases that we're doing the full study and, you know, is it relevant? And I would imagine a project like this, you're comfortable that those pieces can come over a two or three-year period of time and there aren't major changes to them. Have you talked about that with the group? You know, when we're talking pausing on fundraising, I get it, but then also bringing these in in pieces, the hype is at the beginning. And when the delivery is slower, sometimes you fade in, in projects not getting.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I think, I think we should be in good shape from that standpoint. We'd always planned to construct this project over two phases. The way it's budgeted from the cities funding for that was in two phases over two different years. So we anticipated it'll probably be done the exact same way. It just pushed out a year because of the, the pandemic. And, and we really actually felt like designing it all at one time actually eliminates some of those issues you talked about related to, do things change or not? Now that we're able to bring one team in that looks at the entire site, designs it all together, we also did put in the, the request for proposals that we know that it will probably be constructed in two phases. So they were, they came into that project knowing that.
And that is what does, I do like as a change from what we were looking at in the past was that vision, it's all there. I think that'll help with fundraising, too. So it's pretty exciting when you can see the whole project, right? And one vision from a group and, and us coming together. So that's, that's going to be a lot of fun to watch this.
Yeah, we're, we're excited about this group and, and, and what's some of the things we pointed out as well in the RFP, knowing that we wanted them, as they started to develop the, the, the construction plans for this, identify areas that would be good for, for donors. A lot of work's been done already, but we want to identify a lot of different specific things that might have naming opportunities or donation opportunities through all, all levels of possibilities, anywhere from a thousand dollars up to the two hundred and fifty or even a half a million dollars if we could find some of those, those big donors out there. So I, I think we're in a, we're in a good setup with this team and excited about it.
Thanks.
Other counsel questions or comments?
I'd move the resolution ordering the contract to Smith Group.
Second.
It's moved by John, segmented by Susan. Further discussion? Hearing them, will the counsel please vote? That item passes four to zero. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is a site plan amendment with the Chin Church at eight-nine-hundred Hickman Road. And Amanda, you have this one?
Mayor, counsel, good evening. As you said, tonight, we have a site plan amendment for the Chin Church in front of you. I apologize on the site plan here. Hickman is the north off to the right instead of the upper part of the screen, just to help you orient on the site. Most of you are probably familiar with this property right now because just next door is the Public Safety Facility that we've been working on. So you've all been well-versed in this area recently. So the proposal in front of you tonight is to add a garage that's about seven hundred and fifty square feet. It is entirely behind the existing church, which is the building here. They are maintaining the twenty-four-foot drive aisle. We've made sure that that would impact the parking in this area. Currently, this isn't really impacting any of their existing parking as their dumpster enclosure sits in this location. They are planning to, at this point, keep the dumpster inside of the new garage if approved. In the future, if they needed additional space in the garage, there is room to construct a new dumpster enclosure between the building and the garage in the future. And the, there are no new, excuse me, no new utilities proposed with this project. It's just serviced by what's already on site. The existing stormwater detention basin actually takes up this rear portion of the parking lot. Being an older property, we wouldn't typically design those facilities to be concrete like that, but this was at that time. Our public work staff has been out in the field and confirmed that all the proper components are still in place in those inlets, so it doesn't require any maintenance at this time. So we're not proposing any changes to stormwater. So the one issue that the Planning and Zoning Commission had with the property is they are recommending, or they are requesting to build with metal exterior siding. Our development standards do not typically allow the metal in that C-two zoning district. The commission was concerned because we just very recently had the Smart Honda Site Plan Amendment where they were also adding an accessory building in a C-two zoning district with metal siding. And staff had recommended a change to an architectural paneling rather than the kind of Morton-style metal building that the church is proposing to use. So staff did recommend approval of the plan as presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They did motion to approve with the condition of changing the outside material. The applicant requested to come in front of you, keeping the initial proposed metal siding due to the expense of changing it out to a different material. Staff felt that it was appropriate in this situation because it's quite a bit different than the Smart Honda, as you guys had seen before. This, this property is not going to be visible from a main road such as Hickman. It's located completely behind and there are three single-family homes that back up to the property. Only this home in the middle has windows that actually face into the property here. And the church is proposing to plant here on the landscaping plan, some additional trees in that area to start re-establishing the buffer that would be required if this was developed today. And this building is quite a bit smaller than what was proposed on the Smart Honda facility. This is about seven hundred and fifty square feet and I believe without double checking, theirs was over three thousand square feet or right around three thousand square feet. So we did think the visibility and aesthetics were a lesser concern in this case, but of course, are sensitive to the commission's concern that all the commercial properties be treated the same. So staff would be comfortable with the exterior material that is proposed. I will leave that up to you guys for discussion and Mr. Leon Thang is. And Mr. Leon Thang is on the call tonight representing the church if you have questions for the applicant.
Mayor, I think you're muted, mayor.
Yep, yes, I am. Counsel questions of Amanda at this point?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple maybe here. It's okay. I guess I understand that request. However, you said they were willing to bring in trees to buff, to buffer that from those houses there. I'm not so, I mean, windows matter, the backyards matter as well. Especially, you know, the amount of time folks spend in their backyards. So buffering that whole area would be really important to me. I'm a bit surprised that we're not requesting more trees and buffering with an addition, like a building like this anyhow. Regardless if we were to, to vote to let the metal on the building or not, I still think there should be more landscaping and trees being put in that area from the view you're showing there, as well as it's very visible from the view if you point that south coming up the road on 90th. It is visible up that side. And you can see the dumpster in the back of the building from driving down there from the other property and from the other road. So more landscaping would be at minimum of start for me to, to even consider that.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Other questions or comments for Amanda?
Mr. Mayor, maybe we could hear from the applicant?
One moment, Charter. Leon, I think you should be able to unmute yourself at this point.
Good evening, sir. If you would state your name and address for the record? Pete, do we have him on or?
Yes. Leon, are you there? Double check, make sure that your microphone is unmuted on your computer. You are unmuted here on Zoom.
Sir, if you'd state your name and address for the record?
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you now.
My name is Leon Oktum. And the church address is 8900 Hickman Road. And my residential address is 8905 Ruin Drive, Clive.
Could you explain the difference in cost and why you're, why you're pushing for the different paneling? The metal building?
Yes, based on our church yearly budget, the cost for the metal siding is about three times less than the cost that we estimate for the vinyl siding that we have done. And the metal siding is the only cost that we can afford with this year budget.
And so what's the magnitude? You say three times. How much money are you talking about?
The, the, the cost for the vinyl siding is about 40, 42,000. And the metal siding is the, only for the building is somewhere close to 9,000. And then a different construct, concrete works will cost about 8,000. So it's, the total cost will be somewhere around 20,000. And then additional work for the vinyl siding, like gutter, everything that's small. And then the total cost comes close to the, somewhere between 50 to 60,000.
Thank you.
So I think a question was brought up about increasing the landscaping on the south end of the property. You know, facing the residences behind. And Amanda, I'm going to swing back over to you. Did I hear you indicate that, that that was going to happen?
Yes. So there are one tree that will have to be removed for the garage location and then eight new trees shown to be planted. So a net gain of seven trees on the site. The buffer is essentially non-existent at this point. There's the one tree left here in the corner. When we have these kind of smaller projects, we try to incrementally help properties come into compliance with those when it's not a full new reconstruction. So that's why we were proposing eight trees to be planted at this time and not a full blown buffer, since it is just a relatively small accessory building.
Can we add some of those? I just, I'd like to see more. And have we talked to the neighbors about this as well?
So the neighbors would have received the notification letter that went out. If, if they drive down Hickman at all, the sign has been posted on the property. Though obviously, they wouldn't have seen that from their homes. So I don't know if they have driven by that or not. But we did not receive any public comments on the proposal.
Okay. I, I personally, you know, I, I could vote for this. I'd like to see a little bit more buffering both to the west, you know, in that big gap between, I don't know if my glasses is on, but the eye, is it those true? Yeah, that.
In this area.
Yeah. And as well as to the neighbors, right? That is a big gap up there on the west that you can see straight up the hill. I think they own that other building as well, if I'm not mistaken. But a little bit more buffering would be nice. But I think, you know, Mr. Mayor, I'd allow that to have the staff maybe go back and discuss that with the owner.
Yeah, I agree. And then again, Amanda, just to, just to recap on the, on the finish of, of the side of the structure. Staff's okay with, with what's being proposed now?
We didn't have any, any significant concerns with the metal siding in this particular location. But it, as we did say, it is not consistent with the development standards. Those are of course not in ordinance form. So they are items that can be not necessarily required by the commission and the council if you choose to.
Your honor, this is Matt. Just wanted to chime in as well is that there is some limitations, at least along the property line, for the church to plant some trees. Because as a part of the public safety facility site, they did award to the city. They did give us an easement. We're actually making a sewer and water connection for the public safety facility site on that south 20 feet of their property. So by us connecting to those utilities, we do create some limitations for them in terms of planting trees along that alignment. And that is, so we, we appreciated the church providing that to us at no cost. But just wanted to make sure the council was aware too. There is some limitations along that far south end because of the utilities that will support the public safety center.
Thank you, Matt. That's what I was just trying to get loaded up. You can also see they have a fire hydrant here on the property and the water infrastructure here. So planning directly on top of those are typically things we try to avoid, which is kind of explains the, the placement of the trees on the concept for the landscaping.
And Amanda, I know this is probably in all of your information, but what's the setback from the residential property line to the proposed structure?
Oh, gosh. It's going to be far. Let me pull it off here real quick.
It's fairly significant based on what I'm looking at here.
Yeah, we're looking at in excess of 120 feet because that hydrant's at about 115. And they're, they're, they're north of the hydrant there. So it'll be more than 120 feet north of the residential property lines.
As proposed, and with that level of setback, I think that probably an amenable situation. Counsel, other questions at this point?
I move approval of the site plan amendment.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that you? I believe moved by John, seconded by Ted. Further discussion? Hearing that, will the council?
I'd like one last comment on this. Not so much on this. I will support this. But being there today, I would like us to take another look at that whole fence line there. And again, Matt brings up a, a, a good point to support this is as we have affected that entire area to maybe circle back with those neighbors and see if we can't do something about a fence, you know, one style, one look across the back of that entire area all the way down would be really nice, I think. So I'll leave that and I'll support it.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing that, will the council please vote? Item passes four to zero. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Okay, well, item number three, which is a site plan amendment for the West Ridge Shopping Center at 10201 University Avenue. And Jill?
Yeah. Yes, thank you, mayor. All right. Everyone see my screen?
Yep, can see, see well. Thank you.
Wonderful. All right. So as you mentioned, this is West Ridge Shopping Center. They are hopefully getting a couple new tenants here. So looking for some updates to the overall building and then obviously some branding with those new tenants. So the majority of the work is going to be the east face of the building. And this, this encompasses everything east and south exclusive of Coles and Fairway, which have did remodels back in 2010. And Fairway's on a separate parcel also, so they're not included in this proposal. But what they are looking to do is kind of update the building generally with painting the existing EFS, the existing seam roof to a dark gray. Pretty much anywhere where there's that existing green metal, they're changing to a dark gray color for a more modern look on that building. And then obviously, as you've seen in your packet, Burlington is going to go into the now vacant JCPenney Home Store. So that will be great to get a new large tenant in that complex. And what they're looking to do is build a little bit of a parapet wall here above what's, what's currently on the building. These are white EFS panels. There's also limestone down here. There's some composite panels that highlight the, the new doorway and then some Nietzsche Ha panels as well. They're also adding new glass and spandrel entrances. You probably remember these doors are, are pretty small and kind of blend into the building. So they're looking to really highlight that location and bring, bring some attention to it. Then further down, the existing Johnson location, they did take the top cap off the tower portion here. As you probably remember, they kind of look like this. So that's going to give a little more of a modern look to that area. Squaring that off, probably adding new, new signage to bring that up to a little more modern of a look. And then a new tenant also is going to potentially go, this is the closest spot to Coles. I think most recently, last year it was a Spirit Halloween or Halloween Express, one of those. That's, that's the last tenant that we've had in. So that'll be nice to get a full-time tenant in there too, hopefully. I think they're still in the works with that. So this one, they're looking at adding, adding some EFS as well. This is a new parapet wall also that is going to have a little bit of an angle on it. I can get to that one. Here we go. So as you can see, that angle here is going to stick out and be, be a little new, but it's going to give more visibility from University Avenue instead of facing directly east, since they're the farthest back tenant from the road. That'll give them a little more visibility. A new top cap here, obviously new paint to give some contrast between the signage cap and the overall face of the new frontage. Their poles will be wrapped in a material called Rich Light. It's a recycled paper product. It's actually very durable. They make skateboard ramps out of it. So that'll, that'll give a new look and a modern update to that tenant as well. And then like I mentioned, the, some of the rest of the building is going to be updated also. So that'll give a fresh new look for those smaller tenants that are facing university as well and to kind of blend this, the new area and the large tenant spaces with the existing that's there. We also got an updated landscaping plan. So this will be nice over the years. We've lost some trees along university, so these, these dark green ones are going to be new. I know this is probably a little hard to read, but these are going to be large overstory trees. Also nearly all of the trees in the landscape islands. If you've been through there anytime recently, you've noticed it's, it's pretty empty. There's only a couple left. So all those are going to get filled. Pretty much, this is, this is Coles here with the three entrances. So throughout the site up to Fairway, which I said is a different, different lot, all that's going to be updated. So that'll be great. There are some bushes through, just north of Starbucks and the bank. Those will be updated as well. Also quite a few of the trees have died in this eastern buffer also. So those will be filled in with overstory trees as well. They've already done some concrete work to some different curbs and sidewalk areas, especially in the front of the site through here. There's a little bit of debris left in that, so that's going to get cleaned up. They need to restripe a little bit of the lot where some of that concrete work also took place. So they are proposing that to be done as well. This was unanimously approved by P&amp;Z. There was one concern about potentially adding a stop sign or some striping in front of Burlington. That's kind of up to the center. So they, they could potentially add that at any, any given time if the traffic warrants it. So just in front of the, in front of the building. But it was still approved and they weren't going to hold up on that, but just wanted to make note of it. Everything in the comment letter has been taken care of. The only thing that's kind of remaining is staff has requested the light around Burlington, which I'll zoom in here. They are proposing this perimeter LED light around, around the new facade to bring a little more attention to, to that area. They also included, there we go, a visual here for, for a night view. Staff just has a little bit of concern if it could end up, you know, potentially garish or bright from University Avenue, just that that light be installed on a dimmer. So when they go through an occupancy, if it does need to be adjusted at all, it will be an easy change and not something that has to be redone. So that's the only thing we have. Staff has recommended approval. And please let me know if you have any questions.
Jill, you know, do you happen to know a rough dollar amount that these investments represent?
I do not.
Yeah, I'd just be interested to know the, the level of investment that's being made. It, it's significant, obviously, and I think, and welcome to this facility. But we're just curious.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I do not know off the top of my head. But yes, it is, it is a substantial upgrade to the facility and we're, we're excited to see it come.
Counsel, other questions for Jill?
Of course. It's kind of my night, isn't it? But I think it's great. It, it looks great. It's like the mayor said, it's a welcomed addition to that area. Could you go back to the, the site, kind of overall site plan? And sure. So if you go to. So if you go to, well, go back the other way because I want to kind of get you off the site a little bit to the east, northeast a bit. You kind of had it right when we got back up, but there is a driveway there. We're starting to see it.
Okay, sorry, this is just a PDF.
That's okay. That's perfect.
Okay.
There's that driveway coming out to 100th Street. And there's that ravine stormwater detention to your right, farther right. It's your driveway exit out between the building. There you are.
Okay.
Who controls that stormwater ravine? And I would assume that is the one that flows into Indian Hills area. And it is a constant mess. And I say mess of trees and it's had to have filled in. It's got shopping carts. It's got everything you can think of in there at times. Who controls that piece? And I would think it would help us with the stormwater problem as well going into Indian Hills, maybe not huge amount, but.
Sure. Maybe Doug can answer that one. I'm not 100%. This is obviously where the property line is, so we weren't really looking too far down here, but if you have a concern, we can definitely go back and address that.
Yeah, I would think that whole place has to flow into it, so they should be a part of that, at least on the upkeep or liability. But yeah, you're right, Doug, or another day, Doug, we can go there if you'd rather, Mayor.
That's a significant one, for sure, and I think a good point. Probably not critical to the possible approval this evening, but I think something that we need to have on our radar for sure, and as a sidebar.
Okay.
Your Honor, this is Matt. We are going to be having a conversation about the whole system that feeds into Indian Hills Woods. About part of the CIP discussion as we look at those investments downstream and how this business park and then also the West Des Moines side of the university impact that area. So yeah, we will definitely be sure to hit upon that and for further discussion here at the CIP work session on the first Thursday in November.
But what's your recourse at a later date, right? Oftentimes, we're only able to grab onto something as it's being changed. And so I guess that does bring up the point of is this the time or not?
And Doug, do you want to hit on that just in terms of the difference in property owners and that they aren't being required to make any changes to the actual stormwater facility? Would you touch on that?
Sure. The primary issue is that the facility you're referencing is not located on this parcel or this shopping center's development. The shopping center has its own stormwater management that occurs up in the northeast triangle of the property. It also has some underground detention throughout the parking lot areas. So although the water does drain in or at least portions of it drain into the large hole that you're referring to, it is simply passing through that. It has got, this shopping center has its own stormwater management. The whole, as I like to refer to it, again, is owned or was built and constructed as part of the original Dolls grocery store development area. We have made some incremental changes to that through the redevelopment of that property. But I would agree that it's a the maintenance is certainly lacking and the facility itself in terms of its function is not where it could be. It certainly does not solve the problem for Indian Hills, but we do think that at some point we may be able to leverage the asset and provide some benefit to the downstream areas of Indian Hills. But again, it doesn't solve a problem. And then just concluding or wrapping that back up, it is off-site to this property. So it's not this property owner's responsibility.
Nor is it ours, right? Just for future discussion. Meaning property owners need to keep up their stormwater detentions on their own. But again, later on this fall, it will be a great time to discuss it. Thank you.
Other questions for Jill, counsel? If not, I take a motion.
Move approval of the site plan amendment.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Michael. Further discussion? Hearing now will be counsel, please vote.
Mine timed out, so I got to get back in, but I'm a yes.
Item passes four to zero. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Okay, action item number four is a resolution approving the addendum to the agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation in Urbandale. Primary highway improvement project at Northwest 128th and US 6, Hickman Road. Jeff?
Mayor, counsel, good evening. Glad to be here to talk about this. This project involves improvements to 128th and Hickman intersection. Intersections in desperate need of some improvements. The project started out as just work on the intersection itself, putting in dual left turn lanes and right turn lanes in all directions, as well as providing three lanes of traffic through the intersection. So we got looking at it and the desire to also have an interchange project coming up here in a few years. Decision was made to go ahead and make the improvements on Hickman Road between 128th and the interchange at this time as part of this project. That, of course, increased the cost of the project substantially, a little more than doubling it. As we looked at dividing up those costs, we have to make an addendum to the agreement that it was originally in place. And that original agreement included all the funding from grants that we got, $500,000 from the DOT, and included us splitting the easement costs at that time. As we moved into the project and looked at some things, city of Urbandale wanted to add a trail on the north side of the road. You know, we have a water main that needs to be relocated, so it's not so deep through that intersection. And then the stormwater improvements. As we worked through this funding, we came to an agreement and a proposal to split the funding as outlined there. Our cost for everything is, per the estimate, is about $663,000. That includes us splitting anything above the original funding amount on the Northwest 128th intersection. Includes us paying for 25% of the improvements on Hickman between 128th and the interchange. Includes us paying for the stormwater improvements and for the relocation of the water main. Urbandale will, of course, pay for the trail improvements. DOT, in addition, will pay for all engineering costs, all construction administration costs, and all easement acquisition costs. Our net cost is about $664,000 roughly. Staff is recommending approval. Open up for questions.
Questions, counsel?
Hey, Jeff, I noticed that the STBG grant has remained static at the $700,000. Is this something we should go back to the MPO on and try to get increased grant monies from the MPO?
We would have to look, of course, adding that section, what the improvements and what potential safety transportation block grants is available or street, whatever is available for that. Excuse me, that's not the safety one. That's the TSIP. We could do that, but funding would be several years down the road. The construction for this is intended to take place in 2021.
Okay. I got you. All right. Thank you.
Other questions, counsel?
I'd move the resolution.
Susan, did you have something?
I'll second it, Scott.
Okay, moved by John, seconded by Ted. Further discussion?
What?
Hearing now will be counsel, please vote. Item passes four to zero. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, the fifth action item then is a resolution approving the 2019 flood mitigation assistance grant. Doug?
Thank you. I wanted to do a couple of things while I had this opportunity to talk about flood mitigation. At first, I wanted to just give you an update on where we are with the flood buyout program and then be able to tie that back to this proposed grant for additional flood technical assistance. The exhibit that's in front of you tonight shows the progress that we've made with the flood buyout program. At this particular point, we are now out of money within that program. We will have all 13 of the properties acquired and demolished here within the next 35 or 40 days, and that will exhaust all of the funding that we have available in the program. As you can see on the exhibit, we were able to do quite a substantial amount of work with the funds that we have had. And I do know that there are some additional property owners that are interested in having the conversation with the city down the road if there are additional funds available, because there still are some needs in this area, both in terms of residential properties and commercial properties. But as we originally talked with the buyout program, our primary focus was on mitigating the potential life safety and risk associated with these homes and businesses continuing to flood. Our energy and efforts were really on developing the programming and getting those people out of harm's way. We left the second part of the question, which is, once you have them acquired, once you have the land idled, what are you going to do with it? So as you're well aware, as we've gotten into the District One planning process, coming up with that tactical plan for next steps for this entire flood buyout area is one of the critical to-dos for that project. We will be evaluating those range of opportunities, whether it be idling all of the ground in the floodplain or a substantial portion of the floodplain to allow for an extended green belt, if you will, or whether or not it has a long-term plan for some strategic redevelopment that is intentionally designed to be flood resilient with the changing conditions that we expect along Walnut Creek. And there may be several other potentials for long-term solutions that fit somewhere in between those two spectrums. But we will be evaluating those opportunities with the district planning process. But what the district planning process won't allow us to do because of funding and timing and availability was to be able then to take that next step, which is we have this great vision, we have a plan. But is it technically sound? Is it resulting in measurable benefits in terms of flood resiliency in this area long term? And because we were able to think a little deeper about that long-term proposition because of the district plan and the water resources planning, we were able to connect with FEMA and the Corps of Engineers and others with our previous work to ask them for how do we get ahead of that? And they suggested that we prepare an application for advanced technical assistance funding. So this is money that is available annually through FEMA. It is for analysis and project work that is preventing or attempting to prevent flooding impacts rather than the funding we had previously received, which was after a flood. Use the money to address the circumstances that are caused by the flooding. So we did put in a request. We did ask for $150,000 that could be used for technical engineering assistance to evaluate these visionary ideas for the area and to determine which of those options are technically feasible and which of those options result in positive cost-benefit analysis ratios for how we might be able then to use future funding. So we are thankful that we have that opportunity. We're thankful for the grant that is available at this point. It does require the city to match in kind or in cash. We do have those funds and obviously we'll be putting the resources available in both of those other two city planning processes. So we're quite comfortable with the investment that the city will be bringing to that project. But we see a real opportunity to piggyback on and leverage the work for those other two projects and then really have this jumpstart once we have the vision in place to then really get into the meat of it, determine whether or not these things are technically viable and how do we go about implementing them? And my hope is about this time next year, because of all of the work and because of the vision that we have and now an implementable plan, that we're able to put a much more substantial request into FEMA to implement whatever it is that we decide to come up with as the solution for this area long term. So again, lots of baby steps, if you will. But again, we are taking good steps. We are making prudent decisions and I am hopeful that we continue to leverage the work and the partnerships that we've built and come up with a project that is really exciting for a lot of folks in the future. I'd be happy answering questions.
Mr. Doug, counsel?
Great work. I move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Michael. Further discussion? Hearing now will be counsel, please vote. Item passes four to zero. Thank you, Doug. Okay, we'll now move to discussion items. The first one is regarding leisure services programming. And Richard, you're carrying that one for us.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Given the unique nature that the pandemic has created this year, we thought it would be good to get back in front of you and give you a short presentation and summary of how things went this summer. We also want to talk briefly about how things went at the Aquatic Center this summer and then kind of tell you where we're going with the beggars night and Halloween, as well as the rest of the fall and the winter. So the first place I'll start is the Aquatic Center. So earlier, when we talked about whether we should open or not, we really tried to bring forward recommendations to you that we felt that we could execute in a way that would allow people to use the Aquatic Center, but still maintain the safety and the health of people that were using that facility. And I think we came up with a really good plan that was executed by our team that we're open for 41 days this summer and really focused on activities and programs that we could control. So that was swimming lessons that were done in a way that was COVID-friendly for both the people that are taking the lessons as well as the staff. We looked at lap swimming and water walking, diving and water exercise programs. We did not do the open swim and we did not do any rentals and parties because we really just felt like we couldn't control that, and that was part of the discussion we had with you earlier in the year. And then also part of it was how much would it cost us to operate during this time and how much revenue could we bring in? So we were able to work out agreement with a couple swimming groups to bring in people to actually bring in some additional revenue in some unprogrammed times. Overall, we feel like the season was a good success. We had projected at the beginning of this season that it allowed us to go forward with what we wanted to do, that we'd lose about $65,000. At the bottom left, you can see there, we think pretty close, we lost about $61,500. So we feel like we're within the range of what we talked about. It really helped to have that swim club out there that paid for a lot of that open time to get their laps in. Had a lot of participants, although down from a normal year because we couldn't make swimming lesson classes as big as normal. They're about half the capacity. And all the other programs as well were down just because of the nature of, we had to really limit the amount of time that people were in there. We had to put bigger breaks between people using the facility, but all in all, we really feel like, given the circumstances, we had a successful season and still salvaged some of the aquatic season.
Hey, Richard, before you move on from that, can I?
Yeah.
So I had heard from the coach of that swim team that, you know, used our facility, and they were just incredibly appreciative of the opportunity to do that. and they were just incredibly appreciative of the opportunity to do that. Is that something that we would be able to continue in the future? Even once the Aquatic Center, you know, gets back to a normal schedule? Or will that wipe out any opportunity to do those kind of partnerships?
No, I think there's still opportunities to do some partnerships. There just may not be as much available time in a normal year. But certainly, we will continue to look at and see about the possibilities of working with them in the future.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, that makes sense. So yeah, I'd appreciate that. That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll absolutely do that. All right. So into the summer programming, you know, with the ability to not really host a lot of indoor things, it really created some interesting dynamics for us and ways that we had to try to still pull off programming. And I do want to thank the team. They did just a fantastic amount of work to find a way to salvage the summer out there and still provide a lot of opportunities for the residents of Clive. And here's just a quick summary of some activities and photos of things that we did. But we were able to pull off most of our season. We had all our softball and volleyball leagues out at Campbell Park. We did all our fun sun and splash day camps, our Clive Rangers camp. We just found different ways to do them so we could still pull them off. So instead of having all the camp kids in one spot the whole time, we broke up into two groups that were about 10 to 12 at a time, and we didn't do any cross mixing with them as much as possible. Same with a lot of our martial arts classes. We did those virtually in a lot of ways. We did have some in person. We did an outdoor yoga class this summer as well out at the landing area. We held fishing clinics here a couple of weeks ago. And probably the coolest thing we did is we were able to scramble pretty quickly, and we pulled off a drive-in movie series out at the Aquatic Center parking lot there that would host about 50 cars per time, and every one of them sold out and had more people asking to do that. We think that was a great way to get people still out and about, offer activities, and really find something fun to do.
Richard?
Yeah.
On the one, that was a great idea. I showed up a couple of times while the goats and sheep were down there during the first couple in that place. I'm going to say it's packed, but appropriately packed, right? You did a great job spreading it out, limited cars, the families were having a blast. It was a lot of fun. I hope we see that thing, that back again. And actually, Metro Waste is stealing that for their staff recognition banquet type thing. We're going to do a drive-in movie theater. So that was great.
Thank you. Yeah, no, it was our team did a great, a lot of thinking and finding ideas. And we were actually one of the first in the metro, and I think most cities copied that after we did it. And it worked out really well because in order to socially distance with spaces between the cars, we maxed out about 50 to 55 cars that could fit in the parking lot socially distanced and still be within range of the transmitter for the FF radio station. So it worked out really well. We also were able to get sponsors for that. Community Choice Credit Union sponsored most of that, that brought down the costs. And so really, we just had them reserve a time at a pretty minimal level, and it worked out really, really well. And it's something I think we're definitely going to repeat again next year.
Yeah, I heard a lot of good feedback on that too, Richard. But I do want to say that I'm going to skip the Metro Waste movie at the landfill night.
Ted's scared of the dark, Mayor.
On the adult and family programs, I mentioned this a little bit already, but we had a very successful sand volleyball season as well as our softball season. We only had one incident the entire summer of a member of a team getting COVID. They were very prompt with us. They notified us right away, and it worked out really well. We notified all the other teams. We just canceled the next week. That gave us two weeks in between when those teams played again, and we're able to still keep moving on and had no other issues related to that entire summer. So I'm really, really pleased and proud of the staff. We're able to really think on their feet this summer and still allow these things to happen, given the situation that we're in. Another great program we started this year, yoga on Wednesday nights. We averaged about 40-plus people every Wednesday night here at the landing that were able to come out and enjoy some outdoor yoga, which we're going to even continue that into the fall. All throughout this whole thing, we were really keeping in line and creating some very tight protocols for COVID-19 to make sure that we're able to pull these off in a way that was safe for everyone that wanted to participate. And really, really happy that I think we had a good summer because of that. Moving on to the library side, this is a little bit tougher just because we really didn't feel like we could have any indoor programming for the library. The library's been closed all but two weeks since March. But the library team did a great job of continuing those programs on. They did 76 programs virtually in that June to August timeframe and with a total of tenants of about 902 people. And that was equal to or greater than they would have got participation in person. So they were very pleased with the attendance they got on that for their storytimes and a lot of the programs that they did for kids. With the summer reading program, we were able to give out 902 journals through the drive-through line. We got 236 back. That is down from a typical year, and we expected that. You know, the kids really, really get engaged by being able to come into the library and check out books and being very hands-on that. So we're not surprised by that. Same with the adults. We handed about 245 out, got about 30 back. So that was one that was down because of the inability just to physically access the library. But we expect that once we're be able to reopen things, that that will bounce back next summer. Virtual programs, a pretty seamless transition here. Had 455 people attend our 43 programs from June to August. A lot of that was our transitioning to our book clubs from in-person to digital. The team was able to reach out. They did a really cool Father's Day program with 515 Brewery where they did a beer tasting in a virtual program. So for the cost of the program, they went down to 515, picked up a sampler set of beer, and then it was an online virtual program where they talked about the beers and sampled them, and that was very popular. Done a lot of other different ways to try to get people engaged. And I think, while again, not the most ideal, they made the best situation, and I think the programs were well-received that they did. So now transitioning into the fall and winter. The first one is the Halloween beggars night, and I know Matt talked about this at the very beginning. But the team has done a great job, and you'll see this starting probably, I think Pete's going to start with kind of getting this out to the public tomorrow. But they're doing a specific website page on the city's website. They'll talk about all the activities that people can do as part of the Halloween kind of time period, as well as beggar night. Beggars Night, probably the one of the most interesting and unique that you'll find is they're in the process of creating a video that will give people some different ideas on how to safely deliver candy from their house to people that may want to still participate in beggars night. Some of them will be very practical, some will be very unrealistic, but probably pretty funny. And the team's having a fun, a fun time putting that together, and I think you'll enjoy seeing that. Again, kind of keeping in with the drive-in movies, we're going to do a Halloween-themed movie, a spooky kind of scavenger hunt throughout Clive. People that register for this will drive throughout the community and take pictures and submit those at different areas of the Green Belt, throughout our parks, and at Clive businesses for some prizes at the end. We did one of those this summer as well, and that was very successful. Continuing with our story walk that we did on the stretch of the Green Belt Trail between 100th and 114th, we're actually found a Halloween kind of spooky-themed book that we're able to print out. And it's a story walk where you'll start at one location, read the book every 50 to 100 feet. And it's a great way to get people engaged in exercise and as well as reading. Knowing that costumes and pumpkin carving and house decorating is very popular, but know that it's probably not the easiest thing to do this year, we're working on a virtual contest where people can dress up in their costumes, carve their pumpkins, or decorate their house, and then submit a picture to us. And then we're going to work out something and probably engage the mayor and the council here in selecting winners for some fun prizes, maybe some gift cards to local businesses, bags of candy. But we just want to find ways that people can still do a lot of these activities, but do them in a safe way. And also continuing on, the library's got about four or five programs that they're going to do throughout that Halloween time period to get people engaged and have a fun time as well. As we transition more into the winter, we're going to bring back Clive Connected. That's not something we've done in the spring, summer, and fall this year because the pandemic just really created a lot of uncertainty. Now that we know what we're working with and how to kind of deal with it and do things in a safe way, we're bringing that back. So it'll be released on November 2nd, and it'll cover the months of November all the way through March. And then we're looking at releasing the spring one in March 2021. So getting back on track to where we're at now that we have a good handle on how to do these programs. Just a little bit of an overview of what we're doing this winter. Again, bringing back our youth basketball leagues. Again, those are very popular. We've been working with Waukegan and Western Moines schools to get those spaces reserved for that league. We already have 100 teams signed up and ready to go and getting a lot of protocols in place for how we can do that in a safe, a safe way this winter. Same with our co-ed volleyball leagues, working on a lot of protocols for COVID right now and finding a way to do that safely. And I want to thank Western Moines and Waukegan schools. They've been great partners and support and help and helping us kind of work through this and still being able to offer this program. A few special events coming up. Yesterday, we had the first lunch at the landing. It's a kind of impromptu series we put together to find a way to get people out while the weather was still nice. We were able to get a live musician out there yesterday along with two food trucks, and we're very pleased with the response that we got. Don't have a perfect number, but we think better than 300 people probably showed up throughout the entire time from 11:30 to 1:30. A lot of people got the food trucks, so much so that we're probably going to have a third one show up next Wednesday. Some people just brought their food from Jimmy John's, another restaurant around, and just brought their chair for the live music. So we think this is going to be a fun, a fun thing to do. So the next three Wednesdays, join us out on the north of the Aquatic Center for some music and food trucks. We're revamping the mayor's tree lighting to do something that's entirely outside this year, but probably be a little bit scaled back, but we're excited about some different possibilities that we can try. And then we're going to try to pull off again in March our three-on-three basketball tournament. So we're excited about those special events coming up. Getting a lot of different things going on from a recreation programming standpoint. Yoga, we're going to do a combination of virtual and in-person, so limited attendance sessions at the special events building and some virtual ones. We're looking at creating a esports recreation program this fall and winter. Taekwondo, our typical little ninjas, skiing trips. And then we're going to try to add in certification classes for our lifeguards. Because of COVID this year, we weren't able to get those in for lifeguards that hadn't had that certification. But now we've got a program with some of the indoor pools here around town where we can get some of those lifeguards certified ahead of next year. Again, the library, a lot more virtual programs, but a lot of different things. The Lego build, Halloween hop will be one as part of the Halloween stuff. A great program, we're going to try a virtual evening at the Arts Center to people that don't feel comfortable getting out there, and some cooking classes. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions about some of our programs.
Richard, I've got to tell you, a great report and a great lineup overall with what's been done and what's to come. I remember when we were having conversations pre-summer about finding things for our kids to do during the summer other than jumping off of our bridge at Campbell Park. You know, we thought, well, we could do some limited activities at the Aquatic Center, and that was really kind of our focus. But you and the team have hit it out of the park here. I'm amazed at what you've been able to do. I'm pleased with the participation, and I appreciate the creativity bringing everybody together and coming up with solutions. I'm excited with what you've shown us tonight. Counsel, other questions or comments for Richard? Richard, I think you wowed them.
Well, thank you. Now, I want to say, you know, we have a great team. They've been shooting ideas at me all summer and ever since I started. And, you know, some we've been able to do, some we haven't. But I'm excited for that we've been able to pull the ones off we did, and I'm looking forward to seeing what we can do this winter and coming in next spring and summer, knowing how to deal with this now. I'm excited about the possibilities of what we can do, and we're looking forward to it.
I would mention one last thing before we wrap this item up. You know, the Healthiest State Walk that we had Wednesday with lunch at the landing, and we had a couple of things going for us. But first of all, it was just a beautiful day, and I think it was just a nice, simple event that was put together. Great to see that turn out in the park, and great to have the Healthiest State Initiative Walk with a group of us. I don't know, I'm estimating we had 25 people or so that walked with us that day. So great to have that activity as well, and thanks, Richard, for pulling all that together.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing further on this discussion item, Richard, thanks. We're going to move to item two, which is the Community Broadband Visioning Workshop Discussion. Matt?
Hey, Your Honor, the last item we have on the agenda for you tonight is a community broadband discussion. This is, will be the start of a conversation. This will be an initial workshop. As the council is aware, back in August, you identified this as a top priority policy item that you wanted to discuss and kind of go through kind of an overview of community broadband. And then obviously, we've got specific proposals and projects before us from MetroNet as well that we continue to have discussions with them and hope to maybe have something for you by the next meeting related to that as a follow-up to some of the questions that the council had when they presented, as well as the letter of agreement that we're discussing currently. But with that, we wanted to step back and not just focus on that specific proposal, but work with our friends at HR Green. They've been working with us for a number of years, whether it's been some right-of-way work, but particularly as we started the conversations on the small wireless facilities and how we were up, how we were going to manage that in the right-of-way. They've been a kind of a technical resource for us. And so what we wanted to do tonight is start working with Ed Barrett from HR Green to walk through a presentation that was included in your packet to kind of go through an education portion here and get some initial kind of feedback or questions from the council. And then there's a lot of follow-up items that we will have related to that. And so without kind of stealing any of his thunder, wanted to kind of turn it over to Ed to start working through this presentation and look forward to the discussion. And one thing I do want to mention real quickly before we turn it over to Ed is some of the work that we're going to be doing with HR Green goes even beyond just the visioning portion of this. There's going to be a lot of internal staff work they're going to be assisting us with just to even get our hands around our own fiber network that we have internal to the city throughout the community. And as opportunities come along, whether it's a MetroNet or another vendor that may come, fiber vendor that may come along, how can we, as a city, take advantage of those opportunities to maybe even fill some of the gaps that we have in our own fiber network? And so that is something that we're interested in them helping us and craft that, and then looking at our right-of-way ordinance and making sure that we're being, you know, fair and no exclusivity to any particular vendor. And then also recognizing that we have expectations of our citizens in terms of how these vendors operate in our right-of-way, and how can we protect them to make sure restoration is done sufficiently and we can kind of get ahead of any problems. So with that, just wanted to kind of give that additional background. That'll be working, we'll be working on internally over the next number of months as well. But with that, I'll turn it over to Ed to start the presentation. Ed? You should be able to unmute yourself and share your screen, so.
Ed, this is Pete. I've set you up as a co-host, so that's right, you should be able to unmute. Matt, it looks like Ed may have accidentally dropped out here.
How is that? You may not be seeing the right screen, but are you hearing me now?
We can hear you, I guess.
All right. The joys of technology and virtual machines. Are you seeing the correct screen at the beginning of the presentation?
We were a moment ago, but now we're just seeing that blue screen. That's a kind of a standard Microsoft background screen. And when you select Share Screen in your Zoom window, sometimes another window pops up. It shows a whole lot of different screens you can pick from.
Yeah, give me one moment. I am trying to get through to, back to my virtual machine. And I have the presentation ready. And I have the presentation ready as well. I could easily run it for you if you just want to tell me what's, when to transition. That seems like a great idea, given the technical difficulties. All right. There you go. All right, great. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council members. First of all, thanks for the opportunity to discuss the work that we've just begun with the, with the city of Clive. I'm Ed Barrett and I'm the project manager representing our team here at HR Green. Through this hopefully brief presentation tonight, we'll discuss the reasons that broadband planning and visioning is, is so important for the city of Clive and begin to try to set the stage for next steps. Real quickly, just a quick rundown of the agenda on the next slide. You know, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about just the scope of services, what we're planning to do here with, with the city and with staff and the council. We'll talk a little bit about just in background, some of the key drivers, some of the reasons that communities are becoming maybe more aware of municipal broadband and some of its implications. And we'll talk a little bit about a visioning exercise that we will introduce to you tonight and ask you to do a little bit of homework and then we'll come back for a second work session towards the end of the year. So with that, our scope of services really is focused on three primary areas on the next slide. First is the creation of, of the broadband vision for the, for the city of Clive. So tonight, a little education on, again, some of the drivers and some education on some of the alternatives that you may want to consider as you consider how to move Clive forward. We also are going to be working with your public works, IT and other staff to identify areas where there may be some needs for additional connectivity, redundancy, and work through that process to develop some priority route, right? Routes for future connectivity for the city and the city's assets. Third, we'll, we'll work on developing and formalizing a, a more detailed right-of-way policy for the city of Clive. That will include both the creation of a colocation policy to begin to try to deploy some of those assets at reduced cost, as well as the development of some formal specifications for placement of those assets. And lastly, we will be providing some what we've called on-call services. Matt had asked us to spend a little time looking over the MetroNet agreement and providing some additional input. And throughout the process, there may be some additional kind of out of scope services that we wanted to be available to, to help the city work through. So ultimately, what's driving municipal broadband? As you know, in the Des Moines area, there is a lot of work underway currently. The city of Johnston is looking at establishing its vision. We're happy to be working with them here in Clive. I think a lot of that is being driven by some of the rapid expansion by MetroNet into the, the metro Des Moines area, as well as West Des Moines and their announcement with Google Fiber. Greater Des Moines Partnership is also sponsoring a 10-county study to try to identify areas of concern. So, you know, ultimately, there are a couple of things that are really influencing, I think, communities to more formally sit down and look at this issue. The first is, as this chart shows, is simply speed. The connectivity that we used to have, I'm old enough to remember the old AOL dial-up sounds. It seems silly, but that's only about 25 years ago, that those types of speeds were sufficient in that little pink line. You know, today DSL speeds are represented by that 10 meg per second download speed. Most cable organizations are providing 100 meg and sort of the gold standard today is for gigabit service. And you know, you can certainly see the, the difference in the size of the pipe, if you will. The interesting thing is that more and more communities are recognizing that, that the size of the pipe, as big as it gets, simply continues to take up more bandwidth. All of us who've tried to work from home in this pandemic, while your children are trying to do distance learning and your spouse is trying to work and one of your kids is streaming a video game, understand how quickly really big pipes start to become very inadequate for today's internet use. Secondly, in addition to speed, simply cost. A recent survey by highspeedinternet.com surveyed 1,000 customers nationally and utilized, realized the following results. You know, reflecting that there are pretty deep concerns, not only with speeds, but simply with price. You can see people consider 20 to 50 a reasonable price for internet, while the actual real cost of speed of, of average internet speed is about $80 per month. Third, simply improve service. There is a high level of frustration with customer service in the broadband and cable industry. You know, in many cases, the, the consumer and customer service ratings of the big incumbents are near the bottom of the list. I will give to their credit, the industry has begun to maybe recognize that they have a service problem and those scores have started to tick up ever so slightly. But there are frustrations with the current providers in many cases that are also creating, creating a demand side for looking at alternatives and understanding clearly what vision might be. Fourth, I think are really kind of community outcomes. The need inside of communities to interconnect facilities, to interconnect the internet of things, to support 5G and, you know, control system applications. Those are certainly local and city-driven initiatives that, that are, that are driving some communities to begin to look a little deeper at the issue. And fourth, fifth is simply resiliency. I think the, you know, the pandemic that we're all sort of managing our way through today has really, has really illustrated the fact that, you know, there are, there are things that we used to take for granted, like leaving our house and going to our office or our council meeting. Government functions are beginning to move from an in-person service delivery model to a, a remote or a computer assisted model. You know, our kids are, are studying from home, our constituents are working from home and more and more doctors are providing medical service from home. So I, I think as you, as you look at the things that have really driven this, I think five or six years ago, the issue with broadband is do I have enough bandwidth to stream Netflix? And I think that the pandemic has really illustrated the fact that this is, you know, not just about streaming and video gaming, but it's about everyday life affecting things that have become more and more important. And lastly, I think communities really are beginning to understand that fiber optics and municipal broadband really do have a very dramatic impact on economic development. They enable technology-based startups. They encourage small businesses to expand and grow in their communities. And they create learning opportunities to expand skillsets that are needed by your employees who more and more may choose where to live less based on, less based on where their employer is and more based on the opportunities that a community enables them. So I want to walk through real quickly some of the, the basic broadband models. And I think some of the key decisions that you all as policymakers really need to be considering as you provide guidance to staff on how you want to take this, this broadband vision. So, you know, first, what, what is the city role? I think the role of the private sector and this, this graphic really just sort of sets a, a kind of an initial framework for these discussions. You know, on the far right with less complexity, with, with low cost of, of public sector investment, but also, you know, less control and, and less maybe rewards in the community. We have worked with communities who've said, you know what, this is, this is the private sector's job. We trust them to solve the problem and, and we choose not to be involved in the solution. On the far left, you see publicly owned and operated facilities, communities across Iowa. Cedar Falls Utilities, others have chosen to make significant investments to bring municipally owned and operated services to their businesses and residences. That comes with cost. It comes with complexity, but it also comes with a lot of control and potential high rewards. And in, in the middle are really a couple of steps that you can take, looking from right to left. First, as our engagement mentioned, includes the development of public policy. So there are things that you can do with policy to enable you to begin to develop assets that will, will position you well for, for future communication needs. Fiber master planning, we did work with West Des Moines to really kind of enable them to, to think about how to work cooperatively with the private sector to achieve those goals. There are public and private partnerships that can be developed. And, you know, as you get closer to publicly owned, as West Des Moines did, you know, you may choose to install fiber and conduit and lease capacity to providers. So there are within each of these buckets about a dozen, dozen to 50 iterations in various shades. But these really are kind of the, the five core, I think, vision decisions that as a council you'll need to make to, to help sort of frame the path forward for Clive. Within that model, there really become, we, we like to say there's really three, three ways or three goals of deployment. The, the first is kind of a regional cooperative network. Secondly is more community fiber and third is community broadband. And I want to spend just a couple of minutes talking about each of those, each of those models for, that we've seen in terms of service does have different benefits and we'll, we'll go through a couple of examples or an example of each to give you a kind of a frame of reference. So most of you are probably familiar with the Iowa Communications Network. You know, regional and cooperative networks really are, as the name implies, opportunities for cities and anchor institutions and various public entities to partner together to deploy one asset that is then shared across many entities. This reduce, reduces costs. It can create local opportunities for a consortium of communities to, to leverage one infrastructure spend and then make decisions up in northeast Iowa. Cedar Falls Utilities, which we'll talk about in a moment, as a, as an owned entity, also provides its head end and some of its more expensive technologies to other northeast Iowa communities that in turn are building and deploying their own networks. So ICN was a, you know, is a 30-year-old asset. It was built with the exclusive goal to connect public sector and anchor institutions. And I think most would say that it's, it's probably done its job admirably. And I know there are some partnership relationships where Clive is actually leveraging the ICN to, to meet some of its own city objectives. At a little more local level, community fiber projects really are networks that are being deployed primarily to improve city services. So assets, conduit, fiber, the technology to light those really looks at, you know, how do we do things like signal controls? How do we do ITS? Can we automate our meter reading systems? How do we, you know, get smart streetlights? How do we connect schools and hospitals and public safety use? Do we use it to control our lift stations and pump stations and water, water system modeling and future smart city applications? And, and, you know, in Clive, you, you have an advantage that there are assets already in the ground. There are assets that have been deployed that really form a nice basis for a path forward. And lastly, some examples of community-based broadband. You know, the city in this model really becomes an end service provider. So those same assets that have been deployed to drive community or to drive public sector broadband really are extended to individual homes, individual businesses, or the city expands service through P3 agreements or franchise. So West Des Moines planned to build a, a citywide conduit system and their plan P3 with Google is a good example of a community broadband program that is being extended in partnership with the private sector or MetroNet. And, and we tend to refer those, even though they're agreements and not franchises, as more of a franchise-like system where the, the community provides an entry point and then the individual private sector partner will, will pay for, own and operate that network. So lastly, I'd like to, and we'll leave some room for questions, obviously at the end, but I'd like to introduce an exercise that we have used, that we found to be very useful. And, and this is called a competing values exercise. Matt will be sending out to you after this discussion, some materials on this. But I wanted to frame up a little bit about what you'll be seeing and, and if you can go to the next slide, Matt. You know, in the context of this model, you know, where does, where do those values that, that the policymakers, the council here in Clive, you know, feel are most important? So this exercise really is designed to help us to create some consensus on direction, to create some policy level guidance, to begin to move the process forward. So our, our framework for this exercise will be what we call a competing values framework. And we've included, or Matt will be sending out a white paper from another consulting firm that we've worked with previously, CTC Consulting. They have done a very good job of framing up this, this decision and the discussion that needs to happen. You can see in this chart, these are some of the common goals that communities have when they begin to think about building or, or their vision for broadband. Ubiquity is a significant one. In some communities, there are pockets where there are socio-economically disadvantaged communities. There are areas that are un or underserved and that becomes a primary driver for the decisions that the council makes. Choice, the, the ability to have multiple providers, competition, ownership of the asset in terms of being able to control it and make the decisions, speeds and performance, the affordability of the asset, risk aversion, so the, the council's willingness to take on risk and financial debt to fund these things. And lastly, the cash flow. And I'll, I'll, on the next slide, just give you a little bit of an idea of how this, these various things may work, either in alignment or in conflict with each other. So the example I gave where ubiquity might be a key goal. Let's say that your community has pockets where the, there's been some digital redlining. The services aren't as robust as they need to be versus maybe the new developments that are already receiving fiber to the home. That goal of, of ubiquity for the community lives in opposition to the goals of affordability, to the goals of risk aversion and to the goals of cash flow. Because in most cases, if it were profitable for the private sector to build those areas, they would have built them. They would have been building service. The private sector isn't bad. They're, they're motivated by profit. And so extending services into some of those hard-to-reach areas, maybe they're geographically dispersed, they're less dense developments. In other cases, they may be urban core areas where the cost and the potential revenue doesn't look appropriate to make the business model work. So if a community decides ubiquity is our number one goal, we want the same level of service everywhere, it means that you're going to spend more money to get there, means that you're going to take on some additional risk. And it means that you're likely to have to increase some of the costs to your end users to be able to get a financial system that works effectively. So our next steps, we have again a handout that'll be sent out with a white paper as well as a council survey. There is an online application that we built that you will, we would ask you to log in after reading the white paper. Complete a very simple survey tool where we ask you to, to rate on a relative scale, some of these opposing values. And an example of that, I think Matt is on the next slide. So for instance, ubiquity and system profitability, you know, those live in competition to each other, as we just discussed. So you, as a council member, will put an X on one or the other side of this to say which of these becomes more important. We call it a forced ranking exercise because the goal is not to live hopefully in the middle. But as we But as we come back for our next working session, we'll aggregate the results. We'll put them on a a whiteboard and we'll have a good, hopefully productive discussion around these around these values, as well as how those values may tie back to the preferred kind of operating system and the the type of model that you want to use moving forward. And with that, Matt, I think we're I think we're ready to take any questions that the council may have.
Council questions for Mr. Barrett.
No, I'm sorry, can you go back to that last slide? Once we complete this survey, what is the next step then? What are we doing?
So our next step will be to come back to council. We'll take council input and we'll we'll map some of the all of the responses to this. The the intent of that is to really have and facilitate an open dialogue amongst council. We have been in communities before where half the council will say ubiquity is the most important thing to us. And if we have to put some city dollars into it and fund it to make the dollars work, we're willing to do that. And the other half of the council has said, heck no, you know, we this thing needs to stand on its own first. And that's the most important goal. So what we found is having that discussion with this as a a rating tool helps us to enable a a good open conversation and hopefully create some alignment around the kind of key values for broadband in the community so that we can move Clive towards a a model and a system, a system construct that really aligns to the council's values.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Other questions, council? Matt, do you have anything to add?
No, Your Honor, this is again, this first workshop was really more just kind of an education point and kind of setting the stage for the next phase. And we already had a kickoff meeting with staff this morning regarding some of the staff work that on the asset side that for the city assets, the existing fiber network that we have. And as Ed alluded to, we do have outstanding agreements with ICN where we have some shared shared conduit and shared fiber and then also relationships with the city of West Des Moines and the University Avenue. And just kind of working through those and really identifying these from the staff perspective. And this will be another thing for conversation at the next workshop is some things that staff may identify as future opportunities or future things that we want to consider of here's what our current backbone is of our fiber network in the city. And knowing that we've got future traffic signals, you know, planned out west in the future and facilities. Of course, you know, we've already been planning for the new Public Safety Center redundancy, fiber connection redundancy into that building because it is going to be our our future data center location. So we've already started to do work on that and and make sure we have enough capacity in terms of dark conduit going into that building for multiple, kind of multiple paths to be able to provide that redundancy to that new data center. And so some of these things we've already been talking about at a staff level and and look forward to kind of bringing that all in summation to you. And then with the kind of the visioning feedback, as Ed alluded to at the the next conversation. So there I know it's a little bit chicken in the egg or can feel like that with, you know, the discussions that are happening with MetroNet. Again, the the agreement, I would say, it's not really much of an agreement, I guess, with MetroNet. It's just more of they have the ability and the desire and the state franchise to 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 build a system or a network in in our community. It is more of a question of of does the city want to control or at least have some understanding of how that relationship will work? And to allow us to, number one, communicate with our residents that this is coming, knowing that they have the right to start it tomorrow if they wanted to. And then also staff impacts of just working through the permitting process and and the right of way management of the restoration. So it's kind of these these things are happening in parallel. And I understand that can be a little bit competing at times, but still feel that this matches up nicely. And and really, if if MetroNet is going to do what they're going to do, are there things that we can talk about about shared opportunities when you have a a private sector company looking to make that kind of investment in our community? And so although they're going in parallel, I think they match up well in terms of at least the desires that I know the council shared in strategic planning back in August. So that's all I have, Your Honor, unless there's any other questions.
Thank you, Matt. Council, other questions for Matt or for Ed? Looking forward to our next steps, Ed. Thank you for your compelling presentation. I've learned a little bit more every time we we get into this. So again, thanks for your efforts and looking forward to the next steps.
Thank you very much for for placing me at the end of three site plan discussions. So there aren't many questions. I appreciate that.
Okay, then we will we'll move to reports and Pete, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Census activities. So some of you may have seen recently that the courts continue to be the site for fighting out what's the future of the census. At this point now, it looks like the courts will keep the Census Bureau to its original date of the end of October for continuing count activities. Though the President, the White House has decided they want to appeal that to the Supreme Court. Here's the good news. Iowa, according to the Bureau, has completed ninety nine point nine percent of its count. So we're not talking about self response there, we're talking about total enumeration. That makes me think that for Clive and cities like Clive, we are at more or less a very accurate number. We don't have that number, won't have the number until well past the date for ending the enumerating. But at this point, I think Iowa and really the rest of the state of Iowa is in a pretty darn good spot. So we continue to be tied with Urbandale for eighty four eighty point five percent on our self response rate. Again, the total enumeration, I'm sure, is well over ninety nine percent now for Clive. But the new stat that I've got to share, which is very exciting, is that we are now tied for best in Iowa among cities that are over ten thousand residents for the best self response rate. So Clive residents did a great job. They understood the importance of this and they understood that it is a civic responsibility and they did their job. And we're very happy to have had a hand in helping remind others that to have the importance of getting that done for our city. Next, Beggars Night. So Richard gave a very good presentation. I want to make sure everyone knows that in addition to the storytelling we did today around the ribbon cutting for, or excuse me, the groundbreaking for the Public Safety Center, I'd expect tomorrow that we're going to have quite a bit of earned media opportunity around Beggars Night. And I think as we go into the rest of the month, with some of those creative and fun ideas for no contact candy distribution, that will have more stories and more opportunities to welcome in some of our media partners and do a whole lot to just remind families that, yeah, we are going to do this safely, we have to do this safely. But there's a way for us to bring some normalcy to this for our kids. As we know, that's particularly important right now. Yesterday, we had a very positive phone call with the partnership to update them on a number of Clive-specific economic development interests, a very long list. It was a it was actually a really fun conversation, the chance to put all those things down and on one list, one sheet of paper, and go through them and see how they are interconnected and also bring some of our regional partners really into that discussion so they could see how they might be able to fit and help advance those priorities as well. Water Resources Master Plan, planning continues. We did receive some inquiries from some neighborhoods recently. Gary Goodall and the Woodland's Creek Reserve Neighborhood Association and reached out to us about some challenges, but also possibly future opportunities they see for partnership, partnering with the city to manage their stormwater pond. It is a part of their neighborhood. We've had similar conversations, obviously, with the Country Club Neighborhood Association. And I'm confident more of the associations around the city will be reaching out to us as well as other people who maybe just on their own property have some responsibility for a water resources facility. So more to come on that as we get into the coming weeks. We will be launching our public portal for the Water Resources Master Plan here here in late October or the first part of November. Finally, I shared with everybody a couple of weeks ago that this is a very busy time for a lot of storytelling. And in addition to the Beggars Night and the census that I've already mentioned, we know we're still trying to tell people to get their free mulch. We had the Public Safety Center groundbreaking. We've done a ton of storytelling, specifically on Facebook Live around the residential street patching, Clark Street and the asphalt overlay project. So we can emphasize with the audiences how important that priority is as the council has made it very clear, they want to make sure our streets and entire transportation systems are in good shape. So we'll continue to really beat that drum into the fall. The mayor's cleanup and bundled brush rescheduled. News got out, we had a couple of folks who needed a little bit of help answering some questions and a very few number of people who were completely in the dark. So I'm happy with how we got the news out there on that. The Equity, United Way Equity Workshop or United Way Equity Challenge, that's underway. And we continue to nudge that along. I hope that some of you have signed up for getting those daily daily emails over the next twenty some days. On the horizon for us, a few more I want to make sure you're aware of. Boards commissions and opportunities to participate with projects like Eighty Sixth Street Neighborhoods and the Water Resources Master Plan. Now's a really important time to hear from those folks. We've actually put out a call for applicants for a couple of our boards and commissions just, I think, today and yesterday. And we do have a number of spots for people to plug on, plug in on projects. So if you have specific individuals that you would like to see get involved in those, please send them our way and we will do some of that legwork for you and reach out to them directly and see if there's a good way to plug them in. The MetroNet and broader community fiber discussion, that is going to be a really interesting one, especially if we have some opportunities to collaborate with other cities that are in a similar spot like Johnston and Urbandale. The pink and white, you may have seen that out at the ribbon cutting or the groundbreaking today. This is the month when we like to go out and our PD team has done a wonderful job coming up with a great design with our partners at Fast Science. And we're excited to get to do some storytelling with that. In addition to some early kickoff fundraising or fundraising ideas for the K nine unit that was prioritized by the council during strategic planning. The last one I'll mention right now or last couple, one, we've we're in the middle of a partnership with Indian Hills Junior High and have kicked off one with Crestview, sort of the normal annual work that we like to do with those students to plug them into projects. With the kids at Indian Hills, we'll be working with them on a water resources related project. And finally, we've got our second check to present to Clive Community Services from sales of our gray green belt goat T shirts, the masks and the signs. This again will be over nine hundred dollars net after we've recouped our cost for all of our expenses. So we're looking forward to doing that in the coming weeks.
Thank you, Pete. Council questions for Pete.
Someone needs to probably talk to Weaver about the hot dog gun he got for shooting candy at kids. I think that's a little aggressive, that T shirt gun that he got, the big air one. But other than that, Pete, you might want to have a talk.
Thank you, Councilmember McCoy for that. Sometimes I feel like I have two teenagers, ladies and gentlemen. It's great stuff. Any other questions or comments for Pete? Hearing none, Pete, thank you. We're going to move on to Ted.
All right, the only thing I have is MPO, they had excess tap funds, Transportation Alternative Program Tap Funds in the order of like seven hundred thousand dollars. And so they reallocated an additional seventy thousand dollars to three bicycle stations, two of which are will be in Clive. One will be at Campbell Park, one will be at the Aquatic Center. And then the third is going to be at Colby Park in Windsor Heights. I did ask the question of, you know, what comes in these bicycle stations? Because that's a heck of a lot more than a bike rack for seventy thousand dollars. And they they were having to look into that, they didn't know the specifics. But anyways, we got those additional funds and we're going to be getting these bike bicycle stations as a result.
Well, that's exciting. Thanks, Ted. And I think the Health and Wellness Initiative has been involved with that a little bit. And this was back, this is going back a while with when Todd was still here with Leader Services as well, as that was just starting to percolate. So look forward to learning more on that program. Thank you. John?
Well, I did want to correct what seemed to be a disparaging remark made earlier about Metro Waste Authority. The event with the drive in movie is at the Environmental Learning Center, not at the landfill. I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
You sure about that, John?
I he councilman, the honorable professor is right. Yes.
Well, the record has been corrected. Let the record reflect that the record has been corrected. Thank you, John, for that. Mayor Protown. I will just quickly say again how proud I was of this team today as we broke ground for our Public Safety Center facility. What a just a tremendous day for our for our city, certainly for this council and for this staff. And so excited about what's to come. So a great day for us. I enjoyed being with all of you. Susan?
I didn't have anything this evening, Your Honor.
All right, Susan, thank you. Michael?
Well, you had to ask. I do, DART is, as I promised, I I even debated on not talking about this because it could be a lengthy one if, depending on where you all go with it. But DART has fairly finished up their recommendation for the funding model after probably seven or eight meetings since last fall. And they've come to the conclusion of one of the models over the other. I know that not everybody is on board with this yet. And it's going to be a very heavy lift for the city of Des Moines and for West Des Moines, a little less so than for West Des Moines, but a very heavy lift for Des Moines. And so I've asked Elizabeth to send Matt the slides they showed us Monday. I believe John, John and I were on that call for that meeting on Monday. And these were discussed last week. It was interesting because they were pushing very hard last week in the financial modeling meeting for us to do votes. More of kind of surveys to see where we're at. I think myself and maybe two other cities had asked our city managers to be on there. I wasn't comfortable on voting on these financial models without Matt there. It's going to affect our budget directly. It could have, but I'll let Matt discuss it real high level. And if you have questions, I can jump in on the more on the political side.
Yeah, I'm happy to, Councilmember McCoy. These discussions were really getting, we're really getting to a point to some recommendations at the end of February earlier this year. And then the pandemic hit and there was kind of a large pause for six months, at least, on these discussions. And they've really ramped up in the last month. And what what I'm showing here on the screen is a model that we went, I think they the group went through about five different models that the consultants that were were helping DART staff through all of this proposed. And I think Scott Raker or Scott Racker was the kind of facilitator for the discussion. I felt did a really good job of, you know, making sure they that the group, and this was this was the commissioners, going through kind of the values that the the group wanted to see. And it was really, how do we find a way to balance buy into this regional system? Getting all the communities to buy in, this is a regional system to support, but also have a service component as well. And so I think where this model where they ended up, recognizing that, you know, Des Moines is the large, you know, one of the largest benefactors from DART. And I think Des Moines even acknowledged in the conversation that there's probably a role for them to 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 pay a bit more in terms of the DART levy. Of course, that is, there is a limitation on that legislatively currently with the ninety cent cap that that is imposed on DART. And that would require this, this model would require that cap to go away for Des Moines to to increase. But recognizing, okay, taking Des Moines kind of off the top and understanding that the majority of the system and the routes are in their community. It's about a fifty fifty share between Des Moines and the other communities. And so with taking Des Moines off the top and kind of capping their contribution at a certain percentage, then looking at with all the other members, this kind of tiered approach of you have a population fifty percent and then a service tier. So it's kind of the population fifty percent is really the regional component and then getting direct at the service levels. And so what you can see on the screen there is really, depending on the level of service you receive in your community, whether it's full seven day service or all the way down to just only paratransit for some of the smaller communities, that the percentage that you pay is is that the percentage that you pay is reflective of that in terms of the, the tax levy itself. And so what that results in, and there was some kind of discussion back and forth on whether it should be 60% population, 40% tiers. And, and Councilmember McCoy can speak to this, but I believe that the commissioners kind of felt to be able to explain this model to the communities as well as the public that ultimately pay the taxes associated that go to DART, that the 50/50 split was just an easier model to describe. And with that, and I'll go back to one key discussion point in all of this was, you know, in Des Moines, you know, yes, Des Moines has got a heavy lift here, but it was an understanding of, you know, don't hit us all at one time. Can it, can it be blended in, in terms of a higher impact to the city of Des Moines in terms of funding the DART system? And so one thing that the commission has been discussing, and this was even back in February, is having some kind of phased-in approach or blended-in approach over a series of five years to then get to the final model. And what you see here on the screen is kind of where the rates would go for the various communities and where, as you see, Des Moines and West Des Moines would be higher than what they normally would have been going with the old formula and then where they go with the new formula. Communities like Clive and others benefit from the system. But I think it wasn't, what was really good about the commission discussion was it wasn't so much people focusing on where their levies go. It was really this kind of sticking to the theory of a regional buy-in component and a service component. And I know Councilmember McCoy and Edwards and Mayor Sircena, when we had kind of our initial discussion with DART, when they were doing their initial focus group interviews with us and Scott came, Scott Racker came and had a conversation with us, that was one big thing that we emphasized as a, as a community. And so I think we're seeing that in, in at least the model that's being proposed. So I'm, I guess, from the, your city manager's perspective, I'm optimistic that there is a path forward. But I think what's really important for all, particularly all the suburban communities to understand that, you know, to Councilmember McCoy's point, that Des Moines does have the heavy lift here that's going to require legislative change. But I think this model puts us in a position where all of the DART communities can step up and tell the legislature, we have, we have this figured out. Des Moines is willing to substantially invest in the system for the long term and that we need the legislative change to, to make our solution that we've figured out work. And so I think it behooves all of us to support Des Moines and West Des Moines, because they have a little bit of a lift as well for changes, but definitely the city of Des Moines. And, and I think it's a, a good show of faith that the city of Des Moines is willing to hopefully consider this and then how can we help them out? So with that, Councilmember McCoy, I don't know if you wanted to speak to any other elements to that, particularly with the support for Des Moines?
And it was key, you know, several years ago, when we discussed and changed the governance of DART, one of the big worries and holdups from Des Moines was that this would happen. And, you know, I, I gave them anyways, my assurance that if I was still on the board at the time that the formula was set, that I would be supporting a phased-in approach. And it is what I have supported the whole time. Some were supporting that we just turned the key and hit Des Moines with the cost over a year or two, two period of time. To me, that just wasn't fair, as well as it was something I agreed on long ago during the governance discussion. Des Moines may be coming back with more of a seven to 10-year phase-in plan. There are a couple of Des Moines council members that have just heard about this in the last 24 hours and are extremely unhappy. And so, you know, hopefully this settles in with them and they think about it. But I think you're going to hear back from those three or so that, you know, either we're in a regional model or not, they're pushing for a flat fee for everybody, which I don't think is realistic for the majority of this group here that you see on the screen. Des Moines is going to have to do something. So it may have been that the commissioner on the board has spoken out of turn a bit. But again, we'll see where it goes. Right now, you have a consensus with everybody on the board that this is the model. Now each council needs to vote on it. As you can see, Clive, it's a pretty easy decision as it goes down.
Michael, remind me again what the timeframe is on next steps?
Well, they can't do anything until the legislators un, you know, raise the cap. But they are going to really push us. So here's, yeah, there you go. They are really going to push us to want to vote or at least support this formula so they can move forward with the legislators, legislators, letting them know that, you know, we're all in lockstep. And if they just let us handle it and un, we'll take it ourselves. Again, here's your, here's your next two. It's going to be quite a lift, I think, for Des Moines, especially West Des Moines may come around. It's Russ Trimble is the commissioner and the chair. And he's come around entirely on this whole issue. So we'll see.
Well, appreciate you keeping us informed. Yeah, this is a big one for sure. So is that really all you have for your report tonight?
Yes, sir.
That was, that was, that was pretty.
And the hopes that someone could inject on the hot dog gun that Weaver's started shooting at kids with candy, getting nowhere with that one.
Counsel, are there questions on the DART information that was just discussed? Lot more to come for sure. So Michael, thank you. Madam Counsel, anything for the good of the order?
No, your honor. Thank you.
You are welcome. Matt?
A few items tonight. Appreciate, you know, sticking with the metro waste theme, I guess, tonight, their assistance with chipping our massive pile of storm debris and bringing over the chipper for that. So we've now, if you haven't driven past there and see the two mountains of wood chips every morning, you can see the steam rolling off those piles. So we've already seen a number of folks taking advantage of our, our free wood pile or chip pile. So I know Pete's been working hard to promote that on our social media. So our hope is, is we dwindle that pile over time and not have to transport it out of there. So happy with that movement along. And also you saw in the correspondence that we helped the city of Des Moines briefly with, with an operator and some of our, one of our end loaders to help them through the, the last parts of their cleanup efforts. So just another display of the cities in the metro helping each other out. Also, on another regional front, the WRA earlier this week, and I sit on the Finance Committee and Councilmember McCoy sits on the Policy Committee of, we are finally moving forward now with biogas revenue. It's a short-term contract to actually be bringing revenue in. This has obviously been in discussions for a number of years, but now all the infrastructure is in place. A short-term agreement is, we'll now start bringing revenue in for the next year. And there'll be a point where that contract will go month to month in the efforts to hopefully have a long-term agreement in place to really kind of allow WRA to project what revenues will come back in to, to fund both the investments that they ever made to make this, make this possible and then the benefits back to the members, whether through terms of capital expenses or operational support. That was really the vision of the biogas project from the beginning. So happy to see that moving forward. On the legislative front, just actually started today, chipping away at the redraft or drafting the legislative priorities or some, at least some potential changes to that to propose to you all. My hope is, is to get at least an initial draft, some thoughts out to you and to the management team for comments over the next number of weeks as we head into the 2021 legislative, state legislative session. And we'll be sharing that. And then also on the, on kind of the campaign political front, I think, you know, one thing that we'll hope to be discussing with you probably after the first of the year is this is, this political season has been our first test of the new signage ordinance that you all approved a couple of years ago. And knowing that we had to go kind of pretty much agnostic on signage in terms of, it was really commercial and non-commercial signage and differences in commercial areas, residential areas. And so knowing that there was going to be, you know, potential challenges and just what that would look like in terms of those restrictions, you know, staff has been working through that. And so we, I imagine that we'll want to have some follow-up conversations with you all in, in terms of making sure that we're meeting the intent that you all wanted to see in terms of signage limitations. And really, it's on square footage. It's nothing about the content. Again, it's all has to be content neutral per the Supreme Court decision from a number of years ago, but in terms of the size, the sizing there. So follow-up conversations to come in the future on that as we work through this next month of busy political campaigning activities. And then lastly, for me, wanted to mention, so in terms of our COVID response, as Richard alluded to in his presentation, the library and the mayor and I have been discussing this over the past week of targeting October 19th, so in a couple of weeks here to reopen public access to both city lobbies and the public library. Using the similar restrictions that we had when we reopened briefly in late June, early July with mask requirements when your, when the public is in the facility and then kind of number limitations in the library at one time to about 10, 10 folks. Kind of starting or dipping our toe back into that in terms of reopening our facilities. And so of course, we'll be keeping an eye on trends, but at least in Polk and Dallas County, as I know I've been sharing with you over the last number of weeks, we've seen at least a downward trend in case counts and positivity rates are now below 6%. At least in Polk and Dallas County, although more rural areas of the state and particularly Northwest Iowa, I've seen some pretty high case counts here over the last couple of weeks. But just wanted to see if there's any questions from counsel on that. And then that also would open up the opportunity for us to have these meetings as hybrid, in-person and virtual, likely for your next meeting in October and as well as the work session in the beginning of November for the CIP. So any comments or questions or concerns with that strategy moving forward?
Counsel, anything? I think it's good direction, man. You know, we're watching those numbers daily and, and want to be prudent about any, about any steps that we take. So just because we're talking about it now doesn't mean that that won't change if the numbers change and the guidance changes.
Correct. Definitely agree. And yep, and that's all I have, your honor, unless there's any other questions.
Counsel, questions for Matt? Okay, thank you, Matt. Appreciate that. Matthew, any additional correspondence?
We do not have anything additional.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, is there anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, I'm going to adjourn us at 8:43 PM. Thank you all very much.